...not to be considered a public community meeting. Ms. Allen, will you call the role?
Yes, Mr. Lumpkin?
Here.
Mrs. Simmons?
President.
And Mrs. Kilgore? And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Can we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, and then I do have...
This time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as present. First, I'm sorry, are there any changes?
Yes, the only change I have is that after executive session, I will be adding a personnel document, the Human Resources Agenda, I will be adding that document to the official agenda.
So we've heard the changes, I need a motion. It's been perfected, Ms. Allen, would you call the role, please?
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore? Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
I want to take this to adopt the agenda with changes.
Um, was it executive session?
Yes.
Yeah, well, move it to the executive session.
So now, I will need a motion to move into executive session.
I move.
It's been moved. And second, Ms. Allen, would you call the role?
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Oh, yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion. For us to enter into the executive session at eight o'clock.
It is a review of the updated district personnel chart, personnel organizational chart. In your folder, I have provided everyone your vanilla folder. I have provided everyone, everyone a copy of all the documents that I'll be going through this morning, along with, I will be, I will be moving through the PowerPoint presentation as well. So those are the superintendent report items that we'll be working through this morning. The first is a, a will be the organizational chart. So what I've provided everyone is a copy of the updated organizational chart that I will be sharing with the district based upon what we do here in a few minutes and the discussions that we have had, the board has had. I wanted everyone to get an opportunity to see that in clear view so you could ask any questions if, if you have any. What, what we do have is the setup that we discussed over the last several meetings, the level of reorganization, along with just some, some other, other details that, that have been addressed with the, you know, the announcement of the board's intent to hire Ms. Adams as the treasurer, the two executive director positions, the movement of the secretaries to the directors, the vacant director of operations position, the assistant principal position with regards to Ram Nation Virtual Academy. Also, there'll be an update, the first of May, first meeting in May with regards to what our plans are for Ram Nation Virtual Academy. We have, we have been having, we've had a lot of dialogue about what that, what that program will look like in the future. So in essence, that is the organizational chart that we've shaped. Questions? You want to take a minute to look at it? Not? Move on? I give you a second to take a look at it. Am I good? The next item will be denoted as agenda item B. It is the approval of the personnel agenda with the acknowledgement of the step increase for administrators in the section administrative contracts four through 22. I am on the, on the, the matrix that was shared and then that will become the official personnel agenda for, human resources agenda for this meeting. I am asking for action on that this morning.
Emotion?
I'll say.
So the one, emotion?
Yes.
And Mr.? Okay. Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Ruffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kielgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
And I'm sure the administrative staff and our folks will appreciate the approval of the personnel agenda. Thank you again. Next, C. What, what we're going to do next is we're going to have a couple of, not a couple, but five quick department overviews. Each of the directors of those identified departments will provide a brief overview of their respective departments. Our overview will include staffing, current projects, initiatives in a few minutes for any Q and A board members may have. Please refer to document A in your folder. And we are going to start with the one and only Mrs. Tracy Mallory for the Department of Student Services. And, and my intent is especially for our newer board members, just to give you a general overview of who these people are, what their roles and responsibilities are, who reports to them, who are the people that they, that they supervise or manage, and then ultimately some of the initiatives that they, that they are planning to, to work through over the next, over the next year. All right. Ms. Ruffin, it's on you.
Good morning, Board. Again, as Mr. Howard stated, I'm the one and only Tracy Mallory. So currently I serve as the Director of Student Services. It looks like, I think Mr. Howard has a brief overview of each one of our departments for you to, so I won't, you know, read it, of course, verbatim. There are staff, several staff members and several initiatives that fall up under Student Services. So special education serves up under Student Services, McKinney Vento, and our families who are, other families who are in transition, like foster place students, students who are in juvenile detention, and things of that nature fall up under our department. But also health services, mental health therapy, social work, social emotional, student registration and enrollment, Medicaid, home instruction, discipline, all of those things fall up under the purview of the Student Services Department. And so with that, of course, I can't do it alone. And so I have a Student Services Coordinator who works directly up under me, the special education coordinators. There are three attendance specialists in the district, one at the Madison Park, one at the ELC, one at the, one at Westbrook who serves Westbrook and the middle school, and then one at the high school. We have three social workers who are in the district who also fall up under Student Services, and they support elementary and secondary accordingly. We have a district nurse and five school LPNs or school clinic aides who also fall up under our department. A lot falls up under Student Services, as you can see. It's definitely a multifaceted department. We also work directly alongside with curriculum and trying to, you know, help staff and students in the building with those other non-academic supports that we know that all students need if they're going to be successful in school, students and families, that is. So, didn't want to read it verbatim, it's there. If you have any questions. I do want to, I'll pass around an additional document. It's the same, but it looks like maybe the back got left off. That's okay, it was just a few things on the back where it looks, where we talk about just the overview of some projects and things that are coming up. So my department is directly involved with the creation and the revision of the student code of conduct that we use throughout the district. So that's a process and initiative that we're currently working on right now. And our department is And our department is working alongside Mr. Logan, Cicely Bersy, who's here today. She's a Student Services Coordinator, is working directly with Mr. Logan in making sure that, you know, our back-to-school bash and our parent resource rooms are coming along.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mallory. And I want to note that there are a couple documents in here that did have a few items on the back. So, as Mr. Manley gets started, I'm gonna go run and get those other documents so you can see those additional items on the back because I do, I don't want to short, short anybody with that regards. And that was a omission by me. I guess I didn't hit two sided when I, when I printed. So, if you got any questions for Ms. Mallory?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the social worker's primary role?
So, they are, I use the term loosely, gatekeepers of all of the resources that are available to our students and our families. So, they should be that main point of contact in making sure that our families and our teachers know all of the resources that are available to help support them. So, they can help make connections with outside partners and the resources that are available in, within the school building as well for the supports that they need. So, they don't necessarily have like, it's different than like Children's Services caseload social work, if that makes sense. Yeah, in-school social work looks different.
But so often we have families that enter into the district and who are, they are group home students.
Yes, families in transition, yeah. They fall up under, uh-huh, foster place.
So, do they give like a overview of like a social history of the family or the, or the students? So, often I hear that we don't have any information about this student, this kid just, you know, appeared in the district and now we have to kind of like, you know, navigate through what this kid has been through, what we need to offer him, or sometimes don't even know. So, is that part of their role also?
So, it's part of their role to help navigate it, but when a student shows up, we don't get any heads up that a student is showing up or that a student is going to be newly enrolled. And so, you know, the law, House Bill 318, I believe it is, requires districts not to put up any boundaries for our families who are in transition. So, they are expected to be enrolled just like another student. We are not allowed to put them on a three or four day abeyance until we get more information on them. Yeah. And so, we have to work together as a building to put things in place to support those students, to try to put them in the best class we got with what information that we have. A lot of times, we get a document called a ICA. I think that's a document that they use on the other side of social work. And that's the document that they use to enroll them. We don't, we can't, you know, we're not allowed to hold off until we get school records and IEP, the ETR, and all of those other documents. All of those other documents will be forthcoming, if that makes sense. So, they don't even register them with, them with PUTHA residence or anything. That one ICA document is the document to say this student is currently foster placed, group home, under the guidance of Montgomery County Children's Services or Franklin County Children's Services. We get them from all over, actually, and that's what they use to enroll them.
So, I think a follow-up to that. I don't think President Cherry was asking if there's delay in their enrollment. I think she was asking what kind of, what student is enrolled, what type of, yes, resources in the social work, trying to make those dots, connecting the dots, all the things you're talking about, what student is enrolled, not delaying the enrollment, but however when the student becomes a student, the registration is over, how is the social worker key to connecting all those dots? Is that right?
Right. So, each school operates differently, right? So, we don't have one social worker at each building. So, there's a secondary social worker who works with middle school and a high school, and then there's elementary social worker who works with the other schools. And so, each school should be, should have processes in place for when a new student is enrolled and who all's hands are on that new student when they are enrolled.
Where can we get to though today? So, is there a place where we can go and look at what resources are provided to students when they show up in the district?
Oh, for sure, yeah. So, there's another slide that I don't, I don't want to go through, but we have a whole shared drive for Student Services that lists all of the resources and everything that's available to families. All administrators have access to that, the school social workers, everybody in that department has access to that drive, yes.
And do all of, all of the resource providers that are actually in Trotwood, that are community organizations have, have access to that as well?
They do.
How often do we update that?
Well, I mean, it's updated as yearly as the resources become available. But that kind of looks different from year to year.
What I'm saying, inside the district?
Yeah, you're talking about inside the district, like who all, like our mental, what's the process for referral for our mental health therapist, our social worker, or the resiliency coordinator? Yes.
And, and I can share that guy with you guys. I can share it with, with Ms. Mallory doing. All right?
No problem.
I think you said, is it a 1200 to the 300, to the power?
Yes, to some degree.
So, I know Ms. Anderson came a couple months ago and did a presentation to our, to the board at the board meeting.
So, the district attendance team that Mr. Howard put together, uh-huh.
Do we have any results?
We'll, we'll have an update in May. We'll have an update in May from Ms. Anderson. She'll come up and just kind of share where we are. She, through, through the district leadership team, has been providing updates to that team on a, on a monthly basis. So, come May, we'll, that's, we'll provide an update. Ready more questions for Ms. Mallory?
And so, attendance wise, those individuals who work up, right up under our department, Mr. Bikes, Mr. Wilkson, Ms. Serat, they are responsible for home visits, tracking attendance of our students who, who's, who have met tho, that threshold of hours, making sure that attendance intervention plans are put into place for those families as well.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Manley?
Good morning, Board of Education members. Superintendent Howard, Treasurer Allen, thanks for this opportunity. I think you have a document in front of you that says, Human Resources. One of the things that Mr. Howard wanted me to highlight is currently we have 424 staff members. 207 of those are licensed or certified personnel, 217 are classified. Beside that, in the chart you see that we strive to be the human in Human Resources because we all know, and it leads to my next topic, human connection is what makes the world go round if it's going to go around effectively. And so, we realize that. And the staff that I work with, which includes the two people you see listed and Ms. Adams this year, has been our process coordinator as assigned by Superintendent Howard, and she has helped us a great deal, and we're going to count on her to continue helping us even in her new role, helping us with our processes that need cleaned up. But all of us, including Jill, Lucas, and Danine, work to make human connection with people and take time to actually listen to them, get to know them, understand where they're coming from, and then if we have news to deliver to those employees, that may not be the best, to do it in the most respectful manner and clear manner that we can, in fairness. Each of these topics could be the source of a long presentation. Mr. Howard limited us today, and I respect that. Under number one, human connection, again, recruiting or induction, hiring, any of those things could be this, it generate a whole presentation on its own. But I highlighted for me, under number one F, facilitation and problem solving, because we're called upon in Human Resources to solve problems and facilitate situations on a daily basis, from major to minor and everything in between. And that's a very important part of our work. Labor relations, number two, is a very important part of our work. And I cite, I highlight number, letter C, legal and contractual interpretation and compliance. Again, that is daily work for us as I collaborate with the entire administrative team, the association leadership, others, sometimes individual employees, on what that labor contract means or what legally binds us, what, what guides us in the work that we do. So, that's very important. And of course, you see there, number two, labor relations negotiations. I've been working closely with Mr. Howard Legal Counsel, the entire cabinet, as we prepare for upcoming negotiations. Three, workforce development and workforce planning. A major goal this year has been B, 3B, performance evaluation and developing evaluation as a growth model because all of our staff members, including all of us as administrators, need professional growth opportunities. We need high-quality feedback on our work and specific ways that we can improve our work for the good of the students of Trotwood and the families of Trotwood. And evaluation falls under Human Resources and everyone. It's not us alone. Finally, I think people would be surprised, Roman numeral four, data management and reporting, in particular, letter B, beyond benefits, ensuring accurate pay, managing salary schedules, and monitoring a myriad of data entry connected to pay. This is the daily work of Lucas Klein and Danine Ross. They work closely with Duwana Scott, expert payroll specialist. Duwana has been engaged this year in providing a lot of learning for Danine and Lucas as they learn their new roles. There was an extensive collaboration session between Duwana, Lucas, and Danine yesterday morning for probably 45 minutes. That's most days because Duwana knows the processes and how it works, and she continues to share with them to improve our process, along with, as I said, Ms. Adams, who has come in almost from an outside view and helped clean up some things so that we can be better. We continue to strive to be better in Human Resources every day. The work we do affects the students of Trotwood and the families of Trotwood, and we take that very seriously.
Mr. Manley, can you speak real briefly, and Ms. Adams, can you chime in on what we did at the beginning of the year to ensure we are adhering to the timelines for evaluation of staff and administrators?
Absolutely. Before the year started, when we had our administrative professional development sessions, Ms. Adams and I provided extensive training on the mandated teacher evaluation procedure, which had not yet been fully implemented in this district. We are working for full implementation this year, internal timeline, external timeline. At every administrative meeting this year, Mr. Howard asked us to address teacher evaluation. We have also addressed classified evaluation. Mr. Howard chaired that committee. There are minimal changes to what goes on with classified employees, but we have reinvigorated that process as well. We can only get better as an organization if we do evaluation correctly, approach it as a growth model, and when we have to, use that evaluation to say, this might not be the right fit for you at this time. People ask me how I do that work if someone does have to be let go, laid off, terminated, whatever the case may be. And I remind everyone every day, we are standing up for the students of Trotwood because parents will always stand up for their child, but they're not always in the seat and have the authority and the obligation to conduct evaluations correctly. And if someone's not a good fit for Trotwood, getting them out of there. No parent has that ability, but we do. And I've learned that in my work over a period of many years, that sometimes it's not the right fit, and our children, they're great, they deserve the best. Jill, do you have anything you would like to add to this? Because she really comes from a different perspective sometimes.
I would just add, we did do a lot of intentional laying down of the timelines and things at the beginning of the year, but then also just being available to, I think almost every building, someone in that building has, they felt comfortable and called one of us over to say, hey, could you just come sit down and look at these things with us? I know this deadline's coming up, can we look through my things? In a, in a non-evaluative of them, non-judgmental way of being able to help them meet those timelines. And I think people have responded well in being honest with their questions, which is what helps us get the job done.
Any questions, Ms. Mallory?
So, I know they all work everywhere, it's a national thing, national thing with busing, bus drivers shortage. Have we done anything to retain the bus drivers that we do have? I know that this year and the year before was a problem. Are we doing anything to recruit?
I'll speak, yeah, I can speak to that. So, one of the things that we are anticipating to have some discussion about in negotiations is some of those retaining strategies. I, I can't, I don't want to speak to them right now because it's, you know, it's things that are going to come to the table.
But it's national, it's big.
Yeah. But we are, we are looking at some in-house training where if you, if you do not have a CDL, that if we get the appropriate trainer, that we can train and recruit people that are interested in being bus drivers. We also talked about people that do have CDLs, whether you worked at RTA or, or whether you drive a, whether you drive an 18-wheeler, if you're interested in being a bus driver, providing that training for the school bus endorsement and us taking the onus for that because you can have a CDL, but in order to drive a school bus, you gotta have a school bus endorsement. And then, there will likely be some, some financial things that we discuss, and, and I'll share, I'll share those with, with you guys when we get a little further down as far as negotiations are concerned.
I know that's, that's a huge concern everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, and I'll speak to, when we get to operations, I'll speak to kind of where we are as far as staffing is concerned.
I would add on to Mr. Howard, first of all, I really emphasize, he and I have talked about this extensively, about the need to possibly provide for no cost for someone to get their CDL. There's a bit of a legal thing of how we, once we give you the training, you've got to stay with us at least a couple years or whatever because the CDL is a barrier to some people. Second, the best retention strategy we have is Alicia Starks because she works so well with her people. She should, she could train others on how to deal with people and keep them in place. She is really excellent at doing that and has great relationships with, with her drivers and knows them all well.
I agree.
Great question.
So, where, where are we versus where we were a year ago as far as reviewing teachers are concerned? Like, what progress have we made? Because I know, you know, when we first came in the board, there was a lot of conversations about how that wasn't taking place. So, like, what, what's the difference between the last year and this year?
We are still aiming for and have the potential to meet 100% of the mandated requirement this year. That would be very different from last year where we might have been at 60%.
60?
Yeah. It's not that, and it isn't that 40% of the teachers didn't get evaluated at all, it's that it wasn't completed properly. But by monitoring, and I'm so thankful again for the support of Mr. Howard, also the support and work of Ms. Adams in helping me do this, that we have followed up, they, all the principals got a mid-year and assistant principals got a mid-year matrix saying if, are you on track or not? And, and where, who is not on track and why? And then some of them backed up and got dates, like I did have this meeting, but I didn't enter into the electronic system. So, we are on track to be 100% compliant for this year, and that remains our goal because it's so important. Now, there's work to do because we still have to consider, we hire a teacher, no one is perfect, everyone has room to grow, some are definitely less than perfect, and we need to grow them or move on. And that is an area for growth, and again, Mr. Howard and the entire cabinet, we're on the same page about that.
And even with me, from my perspective, you know, I, I keep setting dates and I have to push dates back, knowing that at the end, I think it's June 30th that I have to complete these. But I want, I'm, because of the, the emphasis we put on it, I'm reminding myself, I got to get these done. I got to get these done because I want to set an example. And I've, I've worked with, with the directors and I've pushed their dates back, but we got our mid-years done and we're going, but it, it, I think it's just more of a prevalent mindset now that we know that we're going to start taking evaluation serious in this district.
And as we ought, it's such a huge part of accountability.
Yeah.
It's huge. And people need to know, not in a punitive manner, but that we are watching and monitoring the work that gets done for the students and families of this community. It's too important.
I have a question. So, our recruit, our recruiting and retention data for teachers, how do we kind of like engage with the, with teachers and recruiting and retention, especially their teachers? And then how do we recruit incentive money for those who have lack?
I'm, I'm not sure I heard your whole.
Okay, let's, how do we recruit? How do we recruit the money from incentive pay for teachers?
They leave the district.
They leave the district.
Wait. When you say recruit, when someone, they, they sign us three-year contracts, and if they leave before that, then it's either per-weighted or we get all the money back before we issue their last paycheck. So that, that is, we're working real close with HR about that because we've had two...
Two people left this year and we were able to get their money.
...we got the money back on both of those. So it's really important that we keep track of those new teachers and when we gave those bonuses and that they leave before the three years and we get the money back.
So I know Vice President Finn has asked about the shortage, you know, the busing. What about the shortage of teachers as far, as far as core subjects?
The shortage is very predominant in finding intervention specialists and finding secondary math teachers. We are already engaged in the process of hiring for next year. We have, this is an example, I had to send an email to the principals this week to make sure we all stay on the same page. We interviewed two intervention specialists. Before we could get back to them, within twenty-four or forty-eight hours, they took other jobs. Intervention is unbelievable. Math is, secondary math is also, like, it's unbelievable. So we're using a process that we set up a year ago where we screen people here in HR. And I screen teachers. I have administrative team members that screen those teachers. We move them to the building. The urgency of getting those turned around quickly so that the building administrator has some input on it. HR has had their input on it. We are moving as quickly as we can. And as I said, we, I spent a significant amount of time, the last three weeks, in reaching out to applicants for positions, getting them in for an interview, and get them moving through the, the system. We are very fortunate for some of the other teacher vacancies that we will have multiple applicants and, and have a, a good chance to screen and interview, determine the absolute best candidate for those positions. I will say, I forwarded two great math applicants to Mr. McCray this week, and I'm waiting to hear because I'm very hopeful that we get them.
So when you call me, not just to Mr. McCray, but any principal, what's the turnaround time? What's the deadline time so we won't lose that potential credit?
A week, but it really needs to be forty-eight hours, especially in the, in the urgent areas. It really, and that's also a whole other story that this isn't the time or place to talk about, but it is a concern on some vacancies we cannot wait. Because we not only, we have a plan for not only getting you a job offer, hopefully you accept it, but then what's the connection between today, April twelfth, and August one? How, what are we doing for you in the meantime to keep you here? Can we connect you with that building? Can we connect you with the curriculum department? Can we connect you with teachers in that department or that building? Can we meet with you this summer? Can we get you? Because that's also a whole new game over the last ten years of, "We don't want to hire you," and then you, you're still free to go apply for another job and you accept and you leave. So we do have a plan in place. We just need to get these people hired. Thanks, everyone. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work this year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Murdock?
Good morning. So like Ms. Mallory and Mr. Manley, I do have that one-page outline of what my department does. I would start with saying that what curriculum does centers solely on student learning. Okay? So everything we do is to support that, to make sure that student learning is at the forefront always. And that means supporting teachers and through training, through guidance, through resources to make sure every child gets the education they deserve every day. Now, along with that, we are very much focused on school improvement, so you see a lot of that reflected in the document. We want to make sure that every child gets core Tier One instruction every day. So that's been very much a focus in the two years that I have been here, like to stop trying to intervene our way out of what is a core problem. Students need core instruction. So that is definitely at the forefront. We are always monitoring that instruction through assessment, so we give multiple types of assessments throughout the year. We give benchmark assessments, we give short-cycle assessments, and of course, this week, our students started taking their state assessments, and those are the results that will be reflected on our report card. So we're cognizant of that at all times. Along with that school improvement umbrella, grants is under our department, and I listed who, who's going to be in our department next year, but of course, Ms. Adams has been doing grants for several years. But those grants fall under curriculum because they're designed, the federal grants, to support learning. So we will continue to use those grants as wisely and judiciously as we can to keep students moving forward. I will highlight a couple of things. They're not listed on my department page, but one of the things we use our grant money for, our Title I money for, is for instructional coaches in every building, and we meet with those coaches every month to review data, give them some guidance, make sure they're helping to implement all of our curriculum and resources. And we also use those grant funds for reading specialists at our elementary school. They have been very strategic this year in groups of students that they are pulling so that we make sure that when we have students on the bubble of proficiency, we can get them pulled for a period of time until they get over that bottle, bubble and are on their way to be proficient readers. I'll highlight a couple of things. I'm not going to read the document to you either, but we do, in that vein of training, manage the professional development for the district. We want to make sure all of our professional development supports our goals and that it supports student learning, but we do also take input from the staff. We do, we give a yearly survey to the whole staff to ask what they need, and we're able to incorporate their needs as well. Curriculum also manages special populations of students, so gifted services comes under the curriculum department, as do our English learners. And I think that's about it. There are a few projects that we have been currently working on. We did, as a department, apply for the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Sum Grant. You may have seen that in the news. The U.S. Department of Education gave sixty million dollars to Ohio, and that was opened up as a competitive grant. So we did submit that application earlier this week. Should we get that money, we will put that towards our early literacy. I know you've heard Superintendent Howard say that multiple times. If we get it fixed when they're little, if we get it fixed in early literacy, we won't have the resounding problems that we have had in the past. And, and we have made progress there this year in early literacy. This year's first graders are going into second grade more prepared than we've had a first-grade class for many years. So we're very excited to see. That's the class of twenty thirty-six. I keep telling everybody that. We're going to watch the class of twenty thirty-six. They have great potential. We also, of course, are in state testing starting this week. We have two textbook adoptions underway. You'll be hearing about those in May. That's K through five math and six through twelve ELA. Those adoptions had run out, so this is an opportunity to look at new materials, both, in both content areas, to make sure they are aligned to standards and serve our students best. And we have teachers piloting those curriculums in their classrooms right now. And then the last thing I would highlight is our work with the Secure Data Center. We've been working with principals with that all year. That's where all of our data goes, and that's an opportunity for us to look at data, make sure it's accurate, make sure we know which kids count and how they count, and how we are doing before it gets submitted to the state report card. So that's been a big focus of our work as well.
And I want to acknowledge Mrs. Murdoch and her team. You know, the, the Secure Data Center is, is something that I think for years, the district has kind of, kind of overlooked in a sense. The, the Secure Data is, the center, as you said, is where you go in and all of the data's there. And we were, and I can't remember the actual details, but we, we were short a certain percentage as far as graduation rate, and we went into the Secure Data Center, and her team, along with Gil Nies, they went in the Secure Data Center and they found seven kids, six kids?
We were able to appeal seven students.
We, we found seven kids that were not, were still on our roll, that were counted against our graduation rate, that were no longer kids in our district. So, so what, what, what our, our focus and what, you know, we're really trying to drill down to our principals is because it is that this data is important and we all have to own it. And then what Ms. Murdoch and her team have done, which I have been, I've been really, really happy with, is gone to each building and walked each principal, each principal through the Secure Data Center and, and how the information that is in this data center affects what we, you know, what we get in the spring as far as our report card is concerned. And I think it's opened some eyes from, from, from the standpoint of, you know, if we get two or three kids to move this way or, or two or three kids over here to, to move from, from, from limited to proficient, how that can affect our data in the spring. So I really think it's put a microscope on, on that, and, and I'm really, really happy and excited about the work that Ms. Murdoch and her team has, have done, and I think, I think we'll see the benefits of that in the years to come.
I think that data is doing quite... Are we tracking the high-dose tutoring to assure that...
We have been tracking that, yes. We know that the, the most impact we're going to get is from our core instruction through the day, but yes, we are tracking those students who have participated in high dosage tutoring to see what the impact has been for them. And we're doing that through their test scores. And then just for, through some anecdotal data from what teachers observed while they did the tutoring, we did make a change in our provider, for example, because the first provider we had wasn't pay, using the core materials that we expected. So we made a change in provider in response to that.
So who are we using now?
Signition is the name of the company.
Okay.
But I will also say that the grant funding for that was abruptly ended on March thirty-first. We were going to end that week anyway because we were right on the cusp of testing, but that came, as you know, there are many changes happening with grants right now and the state government. So that grant has ended. We don't know if it'll be available next year.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All of you should have my one-pager as well. The athletic department oversees twenty-two varsity sports, sixteen middle school sports, and then we have a partnership with the YMCA at Salem in Philadelphia that used to be out here in Trotwood. Not all of our student athletes participate in interscholastic athletics, so they have recreational programs that we try and push our kids to, and we share that via final forms with our parents and students. Our main focus in the athletic department is academics, skill development, team building, and making sure that our student athletes understand the true art of sportsmanship. So this, this spring, my, my focus has been our outdoor facilities. And you can see some of the things, the projects that athletics has been going on. We, we installed new baseball and softball scoreboards. Our old ones were, were put in when the, the building was built back in oh-five, and they haven't been fully operational for about a decade. And so just trying to enhance our, our outdoor facilities as well as our track and field, field events at, at the stadium as well. Also, on Tuesday, Mr. Howard and I will be meeting with Dayton Public Schools and Jefferson Township local schools to go over the draft of the constitution and bylaws that was put together for us for the Dayton City League. We're going to tweak a few things. Everyone's going to bring some, some changes to the table, and we're all going to try to, to agree and then move forward with bringing that to, Mr. Howard, bring that to the board for approval, as well as, as we talked about at the last board meeting, then the position of commissioner will be, we post it for the Dayton City League, and then we'll move forward with, with hiring a commissioner and what have you. Any questions?
So Mr. Trump, you said twenty-two varsity sports and...
Sixteen middle school?
Sixteen middle school.
That is correct.
And a middle school child can play to the seventh grade, is that right?
That is correct.
And...
Yeah, you get, you get four semesters at the middle school level and you get eight semesters at the high school level, whether you play or not. So once you start seventh grade, that's when your, your clock starts. And the same thing for ninth grade. You only get eight semesters of eligibility.
I guess when she asks about the seventh grade, is it something that should start at sixth?
So some, well, we have sixth graders in our middle school. No, you cannot. Being a member of school, the Ohio High School Athletic Association, those competitive sports start in seventh grade. We do have our Pee-wee program for football out here, as well as the Dayton Metro for basketball. Dayton Metro Basketball's fourth, fifth, and sixth, and then Pee-wee footballs could start in kindergarten and up. And those are our two feeder programs into our two majors.
Okay. Thank you. Are we still on the two-point-oh program?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Is this one of the... Do you have two-point-oh...
We, and we have one probationary per year where if you get between a one-five and one-nine, you can be put on academic probation, but at the end of that quarter, you have to have a two-point-oh to participate. And since we implemented the two-point-oh GPA, we have not had a lot of students academically ineligible, which I figured, and that's something that I implemented in previous districts, and which I think is a good thing with all the student athletes that are moving on to go on and participate at the collegiate level, which you have to have a two-point-three to play D-one and a two-point-two to play Division Two with those sixteen core courses in each Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Last document is operations. I will be reviewing the operations department. Transportation, currently we have thirty staff members, thirty drivers is what the, the route requirement is at this point. I believe we're at twenty-six or twenty-seven, but thirty available slots, eight aides, two mechanics. So I think, at the beginning of the year, I believe we started at about twenty-four. We were about six drivers short, but now I believe she's gotten, gotten back up to twenty-seven. Alicia Starks and Gwen Grisham are the supervisors, and Brandy Curley serves as dispatch. And what, what I want to be very transparent about, and I'm not going to talk long about each one of these, but from the standpoint of transportation, dispatch is necessary because when bus drivers are out, the supervisor and the assistant supervisor has, have to drive. This week, Alicia and Gwen drove all week, and there has to be, be someone on the phone able to dispatch the drivers, able to call drivers, able to talk to buildings, able to talk to parents. Sometimes there's misconception about why they have a, a person down there. They think that she's a secretary. She does clerical duties, but her main role is dispatch, and her, 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 her role is, is important, extremely important to that, to that organization. Scott Mays is the building and grounds supervisor. Those are the number of custodians. Eric Brenner, Mr. Brenner over there is our supervisor of technology, another individual that, you know, that, that his, is, is importance to this district is immeasurable. Currently, we have three help desk technicians. There are two network administrators. Alan Matthews is, is one of the guys that you have seen before, and there's a vacancy currently now. Mr. Brenner is in the process of hiring for that. Katie Baze is the supervisor of nutritional services. You guys will see her a little later in the year when she'll come and get board approval for the, the acknowledgement of us being accountable to the, the standards, the state standards by the FDA and the Ohio Department of Education. And of course, Tia Rogers serves as the secretary to all four of those departments in operations. Those are the primary areas of oversight, transportation, food service, maintenance, custodial district technology, resources, and equipment inventory. Tia is responsible for management of all district-owned equipment through operations. She's responsible for the capital inventory of all of those items. Those are the current projects and initiatives for transportation, and of course, we talked about recruitment, continued evaluation of efficiency, fuel usage, time management, communication, buildings and grounds, upkeep of building facilities, all district-owned real property. Real property being the old Trotwood-Madison High School site, the Broadmoor site, this, this land right over here. Those are all of our real property sites that we own that are not currently being used as school facilities. You look at, you, you, you... You look at, you, 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 your wheels are turning. So we still own Broadmoor.
Yep, yeah, that's.
Still own that site. We own this land right here. And we still own the old high school site. So those are still parcels of land that we do own in the district. And we are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of those, of those parcels. Preventative maiden, maintenance and capital planning. Big point of emphasis is that, you know, our oldest building at this point is two thousand and five. That high school is two thousand and five. The other buildings were two thousand and six, seven. I think we moved in two thousand and seven. Buildings are starting to get older. So as they get older, there's a, um, there, there's a level of capital replacement that we, uh, that we're gonna start to really evaluate. Our biggest cost or expense over the last couple of years is we replaced all the chiller units, all of the air conditioner units, in a sense, in all of the buildings. And at the high school, we placed, we replaced chillers and updated the boiling, the boiler units. So as, um, as, as time progresses, we're gonna have to start looking at roofs. We're gonna have to start looking at asphalt. We're gonna have to start looking at, um, you know, cement as far as curbs and, and sidewalks and those types of things. And Scott does a really good job of, of keeping up with that. And then we do have a capital replacement cycle for twenty years that we try to embed in, in, um, in any forecasting that we do.
Is the fire panel?
Yeah, well, see, so, great question. The fire panel, you talking about the one at the high school that we talked about? Right. So currently, right now, we are getting that evaluated. For, for you guys that don't know, the fire panel, fire suppression system at the high school. The auto dialer system where if, if there's a fire, it automatically dials out to first responders. That was destroyed through a, a windstorm. So we are in the process now of getting that evaluated by the insurance company. So if the insurance company comes in, they're in their second phase of, of approval for that. They come in and then they give us, give us the, the, the green light. I said red light. Give us the green light. Instead of fifty thousand dollars, it's gonna be five thousand dollars. So we're hoping that, that that works for us because it was determined that by the insurance company that that damage took place during the, uh, the high windstorm that we had, the electrical storm. And it, it kinda zapped that. So I'm glad you, glad you remembered that. That's a good point. And the pool, uh, you know, our pool is getting older. We just had to replace a motor in the, at the pool the other day. So we're, we're responsible for the maintenance and, and the upkeep of, of that as well. Food service, you can see all of the responsibilities. And of course, our huge summer food service program. When we are at our, our best, we serve close to twenty-five thousand meals in the summer across the city. That was post, excuse me, pre-COVID. We're hoping to get back to those pre-COVID numbers with expanding our sites and getting, uh, getting in more apartment complexes, apartment complexes, neighborhoods, et cetera, to offer free meals to, uh, to anyone eighteen and under throughout, throughout the summer. And Mrs. Baze is, uh, is very, um, very attentive for that. Upgrades to district technology, adding, updating the district network, adding additional access points. One very exciting, um, I would say step towards that is the, uh, the summary of the E-Rate, and I'm gonna look at Mr. Brenner. Mr. Brenner, how much money did we receive for E-Rate?
Approximately four hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay, so we received a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar rebate for implementing, uh, upgrading district networks, internet, et cetera, et cetera. So of that four hundred and something thousand, we are responsible for? Okay, so sixty thousand dollars of that four hundred and thirty thousand dollar amount, we're responsible for, for sixty thousand of it. So if we, we put four sixty thousand, we'll get that additional money. And then with that, we are going to upgrade a lot of the, the district network infrastructure here over the next, next year or two. We've already gone out to public via, via E-Rate and got vendors. And we're looking forward to, uh, to those upgrades this summer. E-Rate is, what, what does E-Rate stand for? What? I don't know. Right. It's a federal fund for networking infrastructure.
So that sixty thousand is like a general federal?
Yes. But it is something that, it's, it's definitely worth it. And it can already, already kinda be accounted for with some of the things we spend, us spend on a daily basis. And, and instead of us having to pay a hundred thousand dollars to do some of these things, we're only gonna have to pay sixty thousand dollars to do a whole bunch of different things. And Eric has an itemized list of, of upgrades that we're gonna do. Just run off a couple, Eric.
Uh, we're doing a long new wireless access points also. Switches to support the access points. Wiring, organized wiring, and battery backups.
Which easily accumulate to over four hundred thousand dollars and way over sixty thousand dollars. So with our sixty thousand dollar match, we are going to be able to accomplish all of these upgrades here in the district.
One other question?
Yeah. Yes.
You said that we provide breakfast and lunch, return five hundred?
Yes.
Where does the, I thought each family was being like a, a EBT card or something like that?
Okay, so that process has changed. Okay, so during the pandemic, great question. During the pandemic, every student that qualified for free and reduced lunch got the, the EBT. I think it was two hundred dollars, uh, two hundred dollars for the summer. Since the pandemic has closed out, now only students that officially qualify through whatever system they are in, whether it be Medicaid, whether it be, there are four or three different requirements. At one point, the certification for the district was because we qualify, the district qualifies, everybody eats free. Everybody gets the, gets the, the EBT card. It doesn't happen like that anymore. Now it's, those specific students have to verify their qualification through the state of Ohio. So what we do is we send the information to them, the parents. Parents are responsible for going into the system and qualifying. And then they will receive their EBT card directly. We still qualify for one hundred percent free and reduced lunch because, under the community eligibility provision, because sixty-five or seventy-five percent of our kids, something between sixty-five and seventy-five percent of our kids qualify for free and reduced. Everybody eats, but no longer do you qualify for that summer, they're called sun bucks now. No longer do you qualify for those sun bucks automatically. You have to actually go in and verify based on your qualification status that you are eligible for that EBT.
So does it start back this year, Mr. Howard? Because I know most families were still got the EBT card last summer.
Year, this, this will be the first official year of that.
Of the new?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so in essence, last year, they started the program, but they had not had this primary qualification status. This year, and I've already sent out, we've sent out two notifications to families because they, they looking at us like, where's my? We're not responsible for that. Yeah, so this is the first year under that, that new qualification status that they have to actually go in and verify. And if they contest it, it's up to them to prove that they qualify, not, not us anymore.
So you're saying we send it out, so it's not like the social?
The district. Yeah, we send it out on a district level because we want everybody to know. That is no longer our responsibility. All we had to do is, we had to just go in, click a button, verify that all these kids are, are, are enrolled in our school district. And then everybody who wanted one got a call. But it's a new process now. And we, and we sent that out, we shared that.
We got that in the board like, woo.
Yeah. So we're gonna send it out one more time, too. We'll send it out one more time. Great, great question. And then, uh, of course, one of the, uh, the big initiatives for us is just the capital replacement cycle of all of the bikes in the district. Chromebooks last three years. Chromebooks last three to five years. So we, we've got a, we've got a batch that's probably due to, uh, to, um, to get recycled. We work with a green recycler that comes in, gets all of our Chromebooks, they write us a check. Checks usually aren't big because after about three years, these things are about worth the same amount of a piece of paper. But, uh, that's a part of the process. And then we do get, uh, we do get really good deals. We do get really good, good deals as far as, you know, our large batch purchases for updated Chromebooks.
So we didn't get a grant for those? We didn't get a grant for the Chromebook? Asper?
Asper paper. Here, just shut down on me. So you got any questions with regards to operations? Nope, sure.
Great information.
Okay. And I do want to definitely thank all of the directors for coming. I asked them to keep it to, uh, keep the overview to, uh, a few minutes. They did a good job. Cause everybody would love to talk about all the great things that their, that their department is responsible for and acknowledge, um, you know, I wanna make sure I acknowledge their role and responsibility in helping with, uh, keep this district, keeping, moving this district.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, uh, moving on. Once Mr. Brenner gets it up, uh, and then again, if you don't have, um, if it's not up, we can, you can take a look at the, the printout. The next agenda item is just a, a review of, a review of, uh, some of the goals that I have set for myself over the, over the next school year. Some of the, the goals are still concurrent with what we're doing now. Implementation of a systematic and measurable plan to continue to address early literacy in our district. And I think, uh, as we move into next year, you'll start to hear a lot more about our, our reading achievement plan. Some of the, uh, the things that Mrs. Murdock kinda alluded to with regards to our, our, our district seeing some growth uh, in our, uh, in our early grades. And she's very, uh, very, very on point with, with the perspective of that if we fix early literacy, if we get our kids reading and achieving at the lower levels as they progress throughout, you know, throughout the years, we won't see some of the drop-offs that we've been, uh, that we've been seeing. So I wanna make sure that that stays in the forefront, forefront of, of, of some of the things that, that we're working on. Number two, continued implementation of accountability system to ensure staff evaluations are completed with fidelity. You heard Mr. Manly, uh, you heard him talk about, uh, he and Jill talk about some of the things that we've implemented. And I wanna make sure that that stays in the forefront and it stays very, very prominent in, in the things that we do. Because teacher evaluation is, is our way of holding staff accountable for what they do on a daily basis when it comes to working with our students. If we got teachers in our, in, in front of our kids that are, that are, that are struggling, our number one goal initially is to provide them support. But ultimately, if we can't support them, the next step is to try to help them find, um, help them find their, um, their calling likely in a, in, in another profession. But our number one goal is to support them. And I believe, and, and I think through some of the evidence that has been shared with you guys, I think our teacher evaluation and our emphasis on teacher evaluation has been, um, has been limited in the past. And, and I think we are at a point now where we are really, really ramping up our expectations with regards to our teachers and administrators and the evaluation process. So I did not, those are two goals that, uh, the first three goals are, are concurrent with the goals this year. Number three, continued evaluation of all departments and buildings to determine measurable levels of eff, efficiency, financial, operational, and instructional. Those are self-explanatory. Uh, and as, as we continue to move down this path of, of financial uncertainty, you know, making sure that our money is equitable to the services that we provide to the best of our ability. And as we, uh, we work over the next couple of years and as Ms. Allen heads out and Ms. Adams transitions in, really doing a deep dive to make sure that all of the programming that, that we can, that we have is number one, efficient, and number two, we can afford it. Uh, and, and I think that's important from the standpoint of everybody understanding that, you know, the microscope will be, will be on that. And four and five, uh, two of the things that I'm gonna highlight here, and I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page with. Four, and Ms. Murdock kinda alluded to it in her presentation a little bit in, in one of her bullets. Drive and support the implementation of, implementation of professional learning communities, PLCs, and its foundational concepts to improve student outcomes. The professional learning community concept is the concept that educators are working together to enhance their teaching practice and create a learning environment where all students can reach their full learning potential. I am a huge believer in the theoretical concept of professional learning communities. And you can, that's on the next page if you wanna turn the page. So with that being said, we are gonna commit as a district to the framework of the, of the PLC, of the professional learning communities. The PLC has three main focuses. Focuses on learning, focuses on a commitment to collaboration, and it focuses on results. And through these three big ideas, there are four essential questions that are gonna become the prevailing mindset and the prevailing thought for all of our instructional program, instructional programming and district programming in general. Those four questions are, what do we want our students to learn? Clear and targeted learning objectives. How do we know our students have learned it? Evaluation, assessment developed collaboratively amongst our staff, amongst our teachers. What do we do if our students have not learned it? What are our targeted and strategy, strategized intervention strategies? That if we got kids that are struggling, if we got kids that are not meeting the mark, how are we going to address each one of them directly? And what do we do for those students that have already learned it? We got some kids that have mastered these concepts. We've got some kids that need additional things to do, that need a push, whether it's AP, whether it's college credit plus, whether it's, um, different forms of, of job opportunities or internships. What are we doing for those kids that have already met that mark? And through the PLC, if you focus on those four concepts, all of your instructional programming, all of your district programming, ultimately, from my belief and from what I've seen, will move forward. So what are we gonna do with PLCs? We are going to streamline our professional development, streamline our levels of, of, of implementation. We're gonna streamline them all through the professional learning community process. So our, our, a professional learning community process, our PD, our training, all of that stuff being, you know, I wanna go here and I wanna do this, or I wanna see this, I want, you know, it all is going to have to align with the concepts of the professional learning communities. June and July, there are gonna be, I believe, three sessions in June and a session in Indianapolis, a professional development in Indianapolis that we are taking five members and the principal from each building to really do a deep dive in the, in the, uh, in the concept of professional learning communities.
That's each principal from each building?
Each principal from each building and five of their staff members are going to a PLC, implementation of a PLC in Indianapolis, Indiana, Indiana, in July, at the end of July, when all of the assistant principals come back. And then in June, right before they leave, the, the principals and staff will have a introduction to PLCs here in the district.
Will curriculum be going as well?
Curriculum is running it.
Okay.
Yeah, curriculum is managing it. Yeah, so with that being said, at your desk, there is a, you don't mind? There is a book that I have provided all of you, and it's Learning by Doing. Learning by Doing is the framework of the professional learning. Learning by Doing is the framework of the professional learning communities. It is the it is the cookbook in a sense. And all of our training, all of our uh all of our consultants outside of the things that we have to do for the state and you know, uh progressive instructional strategies, all will align with the concepts of professional learning communities. And with that, inside the uh inside the book, I've also included a copy of our instructional framework. And that instructional framework, that's that that document identified as document B in your um inside your your book. With the instructional framework, with the PLC theoretical process, be it, this is going to be our guideline to improve Travel Madison City Schools. This is gonna be our focus. So I wanted to share this with you, so when you hear us talking about PLCs, you hear us talking about, I gotta go to a PLC meeting, or I visited a PLC, or instead of the DLT, it's the district level PLC, we're talking about professional learning communities now. Travel Madison City Schools is going to be a professional learning community where we focus on those three big ideas and we focus on those four essential questions. Those are the questions that every one of our staff members who deal with kids should be familiar with and should understand.
That's what I was gonna ask you, say, every one of our staff who can deal with kids and that bus driver.
Everybody, everybody. As a bus driver.
Yes.
How are you, how are you focusing on learning? What is your role? And then we'll work through each of the individual groups from that standpoint.
Like for their world.
Yeah, we'll work on that. But we're gonna start with instruction.
Yep.
We're gonna start with instruction, we're gonna start with um with with transitioning to the mindset and the framework of the PLC, so everybody understands that instruction and student achievement is is first. And if we're not talking about kids, and if we're not focusing about kids, focusing on kids, and if we're not doing things to ensure that kids are getting the best instruction, the best resources, et cetera, et cetera, then we gotta find somewhere else to go. And uh my um my belief, and because some people have their own belief, well, he's doing this because of this, or he's doing, give me some facts that say anything that prove, anything that I'm doing does not have to do with what I believe is for the best interest of students. And that, through the concept of the PLC, is is where we're headed next. So I'm excited about the transition. I'm excited about our opportunity to really dig deep and dive into the concept of the PLC. I think we got some really good consultants that we're gonna be working with this summer. And then I'm also looking forward to spending some time with the teams in Indianapolis for uh for a couple of nights, because it's not only gonna be be PLC work, but it's gonna be an opportunity for us to do some peak team building as well. But I'm really looking forward to to really investing in the professional learning communities and getting this district to move. I think we have a total of three in June. I think there's a total of six. Right, six throughout the year, three in June with the with the the dedicated training in in July, and then three alone alone the year. And uh up there, I provided uh some resources, Learning by Doing, and then the All Things PLC. Eric, this is touchscreen, right?
Yeah.
All right, All Things PLC website where you can actually go in and look at all the resources. All of the resources that that the PLCs offer, the PLCs offer. All of the articles and research, all of the school districts that have implemented PLCs.
What's some districts in this area that use the PLC?
I I would say the closest one to us that have have utilized it and 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 implemented it to to its fullest extent is the District of Columbus.
Okay.
That I've visited probably about, probably about twelve years ago.
Okay.
But um all of the other districts that they they have very similar demographics to us, and and you know, I don't want to spend a whole bunch of time with them, but if you can do all that, you can go through all of this, all of the information, all of the speakers that they have. So you know, if we want to spend a little more time on that, we we can do that.
Does the nine comment period? Go down.
And rigid, rigid and forward and repetitive for are the the fours are the uh so but but this is just kind of what the website. Tells about clarity and purpose, collaborative cultures, collective integrity, action oriented commitment to continuous improvement and focus on results, strong principles, empower teachers, uh promote diversity, empower student identity. So so all of these resources are there. So with that being said, excited about that. And and you'll have all the 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 resources and you'll hear, you'll hear a lot more about our commitment to the uh to the implementation of professional learning community. Ms. Murdoch, you got anything to say about that?
Yeah, I'm excited about doing the work. And I do think we have a good consultant that's working with the district. She definitely is a great thing to vision we have. Sounds exciting.
All right. Uh and last, uh the last item I have is um item five, revise the district's strategic plan to ensure all district stakeholders understand and understand the direct and intentional focus of Travel Madison City Schools. I said forty-five minutes, but it's not gonna take that long. So Ms. Cherry and I have talked about our strategic plan over the last couple of years, uh last couple of months specifically. And Travel Madison City Schools has a strategic plan. And after a lot of review, I believe it's a it's about as good as the paper that is that is written. This is our strategic plan. I think it's a total of eighteen pages maybe. There's sixty or sixty or so metrics. And it's in your, it's in your documents. Role and metrics. To me, what it looks like is a research paper. And what I would like to recommend is we spend some time revising the revising the strategic plan and making it a more workable, understanding and appealing document so people can get a clear understanding of what Travel Madison City Schools is about. My concern with strategic plan is some pluses and deltas, as very details got clear goals, the vision and mission are clear, but there are some deltas, too much detail, too much text. Are the goals measurable? Are the metrics measurable? And can it be easy to communicate? The district plan is a very solid, is very solid foundation, but it's overwhelming and outdated, too much script, text, report form, it's a report format in general, documents not catching or reminding, strategic plan should be easy to understand, very clear goals, should be easy to understand with very clear goals, action steps that all stakeholders can understand. So what I provided you in your folders, identify as document C. If you look at your folders, that is a, that is a, it's just a packet of three strategic plans of the two highest performing districts in Montgomery County and one of, if not the highest performing district in the state, in upper Arlington City Schools, right outside of Columbus. It's one of the highest performing, I don't know if it's the highest performing, but it's close to it. Of course, Oakwood is the highest in Montgomery County. And if you look at those documents, if you look at those strategic plans, they don't look anything like ours. They're very short, very to the point. Ours, again, looks like a, looks like a book report or a research paper that was done. So what my goal, if the board, uh the board agrees, is first, refine the five core principles in our strategic plan, include two or three points of focus. Collapse the six goals, because there are six goals, into three very clear and committed statements of focus. For each commitment statement, develop four or five action steps that can easily be monitored and measured. Four, align the district's best agency plan and ensure all internal stakeholders are aware of the stated commitments and the action steps aligned to the statements. Share the plan to ensure that the focus of the district is clear within the community. Meet with the team of stakeholders three, three, four times a year, or three to four times a year to evaluate the progress, modify, update, or maintain the plan necessary, and share with the board of education and staff, the DLC, by multiple meetings, provide updates on the progress of the plan. Refocus, plan, align, communicate, revise, revise, review, and monitor. That's what a strategic plan is. That's what it should look like. It shouldn't look like a, a like I said, a research paper for a for a history class. It should look like something that everybody agrees, everybody can understand, and everybody can use.
This is just online.
That's what's online, correct. So step one, as I just, and I revert back to that, either the six, the seven recommendation, I had six, I heard you, I initially had six, but I did have that one. And that was the four principles. So in the plan online, there are the four principles that identify our students will, our staff will be, our learning environment will be, our instruction and learning experiences will be, our finances and operations will be. Collapse those and make those a lot clearer and a lot more focused with two to three bullet points for each one. So we developing it though, with the new change in professional learning communities, should we start at a baseline of at least adding or changing? What 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 I what I don't want to do, that's a great question, what I don't want to do, professional learning communities is a theoretical concept, okay? It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a plan in itself. This needs to be overarching, specifically speaking to our focus, our focus of professional learning communities are how we're gonna get there. This is what it should look like, what it, what 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 our goals are. Professional learning communities are how we're gonna get to our goals. Right? Help a little bit? So four principles, student-centered focus, excellence in teaching, safe and supportive environment, high-quality instruction, equity-driven operations. All of this information condensed and revised into one, two, three, four, five. Five areas of four principles with two to three action steps, excuse me, two to three bullet points expressing what those four principles. Step two, condense the six goals into two or three focused statements. High-quality instructional programming for every student, safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environments, transparent and efficient financial and facilities operations. These are our three goals that through our strategic plan have been identified, and they are the same goals that are identified in that strategic plan, what is in this. And why, why do I feel like we don't need to go through a huge strategic planning process and we need to invite all these stakeholders and do all this purchasing lunch and, because we don't have time. We don't have time. If you saw an article in the news the other day, that they're already talking about implementing some type of new, new accountability system for schools that if schools don't perform, they're gonna close, which is bizarre and outlandish, but this is the framework of some of of some of the people in Columbus, in the state, in the nation, in Jersey. So what I've done is simply just collapsed the goals. I've collapsed, collapsed them, those six goals have been transitioned into three goals that that incorporate all of that, all of that goal language from from the book report into details. High-quality student is a program for everybody. Travel Madison City Schools support learning for all through curriculum and programming alignment that foster the culture of continuous improvement, college injury readiness, ongoing social and emotional support for all students. Safe and supportive inclusive learning environments. Travel Madison City Schools provide a safe, physical, social, and emotional environment that is inclusive to all. Transparent and efficient financial facility operation. Travel Madison City Schools will maintain the trust of the community by managing finances and resources, responsibility, resources responsible to ensure that they are aligned to the needs and interests of the students and the community. So those six goals, all of those metrics, all of that information, we collapse them into three goals and incorporate all of the information that is outlined in those in those six goals. And then from those six goals, instead of these highly detailed metrics, my team pulls together, the DLT, and we work to provide four to five action steps for each of those goals. So what are the four action steps for high-quality instructional programming for every student? What would that look like? Number one, implementation of professional learning. This is strategic. And and I'm just saying, I'm I'm just saying that in in, you know, in in just put. That, no, that's just. Number two, safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environments. What are the four action steps to ensure that this test was transparent and efficient financial facility operations? So four to five action steps for each goal. Through our DLT sessions, some replaying and maybe additional work, create medical action steps that will allow to a third monitor and evaluate the district progress for those. Aligning, evaluate all the district programs to ensure they're aligned and aligned through the strategic plan, and ensure all the internal stakeholders are aware of the statements of commitment from the goals and the action steps aligned to the statements. These are the groups that will be responsible for it. Administrative captain, the DLT, the administrative meetings, the teacher and field, the PLCs, and of course, the board of education for our board. Communication, share strategic plan with internal external stakeholders to ensure the focus of the district is clear, the community in abroad. How are we going to get our strategic plan out there? What are we gonna do? What is our specific strategy to make sure everybody understands and knows what Travel Madison City Schools is about? Meet with the city of Travel Madison City Council, Congress, some other local businesses to share the plan. Cost-efficient marketing plan with Allison Hill, district branding of the plan in all the buildings. Everybody's gonna know what the strategic plan looks like, and instead of going into a building and seeing eighteen pages and stuff across the wall, we're gonna have a poster that identifies our three pillars. These are the three things Travel Madison City Schools is focused on. Update our website and social media platforms to share the revised plan, handouts and announcements, that extracurricular activities, we're gonna talk about the strategic plan at a basketball game, we're gonna talk about it at a football game, we're gonna talk about it at after-school events, we're gonna talk about it here at teacher conferences. Newsletters, updates, etc. What does that look like? What does marketing look like? Let me get you into that. And and again, the reason here exists, volume one.
It's more than a word. It's our way of life.
At Oakwood Schools, we come together.
Creating a vibrant community where every student and every staff member thrives together. City where every.
It's more than a word.
So why, why am I using Oakwood as an example? Because it's the highest performing district. Okay, I'm not gonna pick somebody that's not. I'm gonna show you how quick, how simple, and how efficient their messaging is for their strategic plan. Okay? And Oakwood works with the same we work with as far as marketing is concerned.
Together, it's more than a word. It's our way of life.
At Oakwood Schools, we come together.
Creating a vibrant community where every student and every staff member thrives together. We prepare our students.
We learn.
On the connections between dedic-
On the connections between dedicated.
Every student and every staff member thrives together. We prepare our students for the future.
Our strength lies in the relationships we build. We thrive on the connections between dedicated staff.
Supported families, alumni, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles.
Neighbors and friends. Together, we create an environment where every student flourishes.
We're not just focused on past success. We're forward-thinking.
Always looking ahead to what lies beyond and how we can shape it.
Together, we believe in endless possibilities.
Together, we learn. Together, we achieve. Together, we prepare students for tomorrow. Our new mission embodies voices from across our community who helped create a collective vision for the future of Oakwood Schools. We don't just aim for high school graduation. Together, we prepare students for life. How so? Through high-quality learning, a safe, secure, and welcoming environment, and effective, transparent operations. High-quality learning empowers every student to succeed. Together, we invest in professional growth, align our curriculum, and foster critical thinking. We prepare every student with the skills they need. A safe, secure, and welcoming environment ensures every student thrives. Together, we enhance physical safety and nurture an inclusive culture where everyone feels valued. And effective and transparent operations means ethical stewardship and clear communication. Together, we maintain our community's trust and manage our resources responsibly.
Oakwood's success is built on our unity.
Together, we learn and achieve greatness.
Let's move forward, united.
And shape a brilliant future for our students.
Together.
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 So, there's no question what Oakwood City Schools focuses. You know, now, man. Yeah. The group of kids that they deal with, yeah, they may be a little different. But there's no, no question about their focuses. Our expectation is to get the same outcome, provide the same type of high-quality instruction to our kids, provide the same type of resources. We'll work to address all of those other needs. But when you look at their strategic plan, they're focused on three things, not six with twenty-seven or thirty matrices. Matrixes that you can't name. So, from that, my point, and what I'm trying to express is, our messaging goes from this. This is our strategic plan. This is the way it is highlighted and outlined in the mark on all of this. This. I won't make you that. Eric. Yeah? I just sent you access. And I'm gonna give you access to this so I can. I'm logged in over here. So, keep that in mind. Yeah, this is second. Get it? To this. Travel Madison City Schools strategic plan. This is a draft. Message from the city. Our vision, the vision stays the same. Believe. Focus on our four principles. Student-centered focus, excellence in teaching, safe and supportive learning environments, high-quality instruction, equity-driven operations. And then, our three goals. Deliver high-quality instruction for every student. Create safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environments. Operate with transparency and excellence. Through those, high-quality instruction for every student looks like Travel Madison City Schools is to be rigorous, aligned, instructional programming that supports continuous improvement, prepares students for college careers, and addresses their social and emotional needs. Our students believe our student areas of painting, critical, solve problems, and thrive in life and life beyond high school. Create supportive, inclusive learning environments. We are building skilled communities where every student feels physically, emotionally, and socially safe. Our students foster active participation, respectful communication, strong, and strong relationships between students and staff to ensure every child is seen, heard, and valued. And three, operate with transparency and excellence. Manage resources and facilities with responsibility, transparency, and alignment to student needs. To student needs. Found this can expect qualified staff, high-quality instructional tools, clean and safe buildings, healthy meals, and reliable transportation. All supported by a sound fiscal plan and accountability. So, all of that, and those eighteen papers, condensed into our five core principles and our three strategic principles.
Now, can we get the little commercial going too? And be like, committed?
We can do that too.
Yeah, okay.
We can do that. We can do that too.
Committed.
Say what?
Yeah, because he showed, they showed that last year. Remember, I came back and I was like, it was, it was nice, but nobody looked like us.
Yeah, we, we can actually do that. Because we work, we work with the same people. The same people that did our attendance commercial are the same people that did this.
And because I think the parents, that's something they will look at and be able to connect to.
So, this is a draft. So, what I'm asking for right now is just feedback on the draft. And if, and if this is something that we commit to, that we keep the big collective to.
Marlon, where is that? That's not in the, in the paper.
No, it is not. This is, this is.
We'll send a couple of pages of paper.
It's a proprietary goal, and it's not gonna be shared with anybody.
So, how, how do we, what, yeah. How do we provide feedback on, I mean, how do we get to that?
You're not gonna get to it. This is mine.
For now.
He thinks provide your verbal feedback now.
If you have any feedback now, because, because we don't have, we don't have time. We spent three days, four days, three days doing a big strategic plan. And, and the minute that it was done, and the minute that the state did not come in here and take this district over, we never looked at it again. What I've done is I've simply collapsed all of that and put it into this document. And then, the action steps will be the responsibility of this group. That will be our group. And then, we'll bring those to you guys and we'll share those with you. And then, through those action steps, it'll be our responsibility to continue to update, to monitor, to revise in the event that we go this way. But what I'm saying is, from the board's standpoint, is this, is this something that, that we can, we can believe? Is this something that, because it's the same stuff. It's just in a different format, and it's just a lot.
Strategic and deliberate.
Miss Lunt? Oh, I'm Lunt. Goddamn great. Skill board?
Yeah, I think, um, when I first came here, this is what I had to go on.
I think I was the first person to say it. I think that's the way we should go. It's more connected. I, I think it's short, sweet.
And it's clear.
Because this right here.
Five core principles, three definitions, definitive, clear, measurement.
Yeah, but I think it gives the board something to hold everybody accountable to. We have a standard and, and the good thing is, you came up with it.
Under these five things? These are our expectations. These are our principles. These are what we believe in. And then, this is, these are the goals that we are going to focus on to get. Three goals. High-quality instruction for every student. Create safe, supportive, and inclusive environments. Operate with transparency and excellence. Good? Yes. Move forward?
Yes.
It's murder. And I say that, I say this word. You know, help me get all this together. All right?
So, I look forward to another district pulling the Rs, which you used as a.
That is a great point. That is a great point. All right? So, directors, principals, we are going to revise our strategic plan. We're gonna spend the next couple of months working through identifying some action steps to achieve our strategic goals. We're gonna present those to the board of education. And then, from that point on, once we do that, we are going to, we're gonna put this in the face of every stakeholder in, in travel.
That, that was my next point. I know you do all this great work, Mr. Howard, and sometimes you don't like to teach your own horn, but this, I think revise like this, I think other stakeholders will be able to, they teach, teach into it too, and adapt and come on board with a well-written like this versus the book. I doubt if any of our stakeholders have read all of this, but how you have just laid it out for us.
They were invited to let you know what was in it.
Right. So, I, 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 I want that to be highlighted. And I felt like you have it laid out in a communication wise. I would like for everybody to know and be able to understand this when you walk anywhere in the community. I mean, I think these are points people could very well be able to adapt to and understand easily.
Yeah, I think once it's fully functional, it would be good to do some town halls just to get people to come in and get everybody in one space, one place, and talk about where we're trying to go.
First, we need any person.
Yeah.
And that, that's some stuff that we'll, we'll definitely work on for.
And it's, and it's, I guess, and it would be really to get the parents buy-in, the communities buy-in. Um, I'm hope, I'm hopeful that our teachers are already in, that we don't have to get their buy-in. But I, I think it's, I think this is much better than this right here.
All right, well, that's all I have. I'm excited. I appreciate you guys taking the time to review. And, uh, there you go. The folks that, that helped me, that they, they do a really good job.
And I would like diverse. I would like to see some of our, um, special needs children. Yeah, all kids. Because one thing that, you didn't see that in Oakwood. You didn't, I mean, it wasn't diverse in any way. And I'm, I'm not talking about just race. I'm talking about, do they have students with handicaps, disabilities? I think people need to know what we're really working with.
So, that is it for. Got any questions before we close out?
No.
Five-minute break, we need, need the rest of that group. Eric, can you come get this up on presentation?
Do we get, could it, could he?
That's what, that's just my updates.
Oh, oh.
I do wanna remind you guys there are updates. I, I went to.
Oh.
Yeah. She said five minutes.
Oh.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Was an opportunity, we always talk about one thing, general fund basically. So, this was an opportunity for, for the whole board to see other funds and talk about other funds and other. And I want to talk about the five-year forecast. So, in your folder, um, in your black folders, on the left-hand side, you have a list, and you probably, I probably have given this to you before. Uh, who works in the treasurer's office and exactly what they, not exactly, but what they do, um, their partner tasks. So, this green, um, folder, you can, um, peruse at your leisure. Um, I, um, will go through the presentation. Um, Jill is going to tag team with me because obviously, when I get to, get to the topic of grants, she can interject some other things. Uh, Jill and I had the awesome opportunity for the last four days to attend the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, which primarily is our treasurer's organization in Columbus. And we came back with our heads spinning because there was so much information. So, at the end, we'll talk about, um, what they voted on to substitute the House Bill ninety-six and how it's going to affect us, which is, um, a lot. And so, um, I've just, it, it is, it's mind-blowing what's going on, um, at, at, at the state cap. It's just mind-blowing for me. So... So, um, this line, I wanted to just, um, indicate what is our total funding. Like I said, we're always talking about general fund, but we, we deal with a lot, lot of different funds. So, our property taxes, obviously, from, um, our wonderful residents of Trotwood, our state foundation, other revenue. Our other revenue, um, includes lots of things like our interest. Our interest right now is, we'll probably hit almost a million dollars in interest because of the investments that we've made over the past year. This next year, we won't hit a million because the interest rates are starting to fall and, um, that will affect our, and affect our, um, interest income. Uh, Medicaid reimbursements are part of that other revenue as well. Facility rentals, so anything outside of the regular, uh, grants and, and state foundations, there's other revenue. We have bond retirement, and I'm, I'm going to go through these in, in a second. Uh, permanent improvement, we have our food service. So, our bond retirement is Fund Two, our permanent improvement is Fund Three, and our food service is Fund Six. We have other, um, funds. We got our scholarship funds, we got principals' funds. We have other grants, and those really small grants, and we'll talk about those. Um, you, um, I think, Mrs., um, Cherry, you talked about high dosage. We have a high dosage, uh, grant and a STEM grant. We have unclaimed funds. Every, so often, we have to move, when someone doesn't, um, um, cash their check in, we have to move that money into a, um, a particular fund. And, and we might do this every six, seven, eight years. It's not a lot because most people, we have direct deposits, so we don't have a lot of unclaimed funds. We have tournament funds, Fund Twenty-two. I deal with, um, I talked to Jonas a lot about the, when we hosted a state tournament, all of that revenue has to be accounted for in Fund Twenty-two. We have facility maintenance, O thirty-four fund that, um, operations manages, and then we have our student activities. And then, of course, our state and federal grants. So, there's a lot of, of dollars that we, uh, that we manage. I thought this would be very telling, um... This graph shows, and I calculated, it's probably a little bit more, about forty-four million dollars that we're dealing with for this year. Um, obvi- as you can see, the state foundation, uh, comprises the, the majority of, of that. And of that is like twenty-eight point two million dollars, twenty-eight point three million dollars for state, um, foundation. Homestead and rollback is one million dollars, and that also comes from the state. Homestead and, homestead and rollback is a, uh, certain state credit. Uh, they give credit to citizens that are elderly, well, I shouldn't say elderly because I don't, elderly, sixty-five years and older, seniors, um, are, are given a, a credit. Also, there's a twelve point five percent rollback for, um, owner-occupied residences. Uh, we have real estate, um, our, our property taxes, eight million dollars. All the other local, um, revenue that I talked about is two million. Our federal grants is two, three point eight million, and then our state grants are about one point nine million dollars. So, about forty-four million dollars that, um, our district flows, flows through our district in FY twenty-five. So, I wanted to, our, every month, the, um, financial committee, uh, we review, um, the data for every month. And so, uh, with Mrs. Currenton and Mrs. Simmons and myself, we sit down and we go through almost like twenty different spreadsheets, um, that just talk about what, what's going on in our district. All of that is, um, provided also to the rest of the board in your exec, on your executive tab when I present the financials. So, the, when I present the financials for next, next Thursday, it will be in your, um, financial tab. So, you can always go back on board docs to look at, um, uh, look at the financial report. But, I wanted to, um, just talk about where we are. Um, this is the November five, five-year forecast that I submitted back in November. The May five-year forecast is due May thirty-first. We'll be working on that, um, and we will present that for approval at the end of, um, May. But, you can see, uh, we forecasted, uh, these numbers, eight point three for property taxes, twenty-seven million for state foundation, homestead, a million. Other revenue, um, is about two million. That's about thirty-eight million dollars for, this is general fund. Right now, through March, and these are, are hot-on-the-press March numbers, uh, we have half of our, uh, property taxes. And that, those property taxes, we're, we are, um, trending exactly where we should be, um, about fifty percent, um, through March. We are anticipating getting that, the property taxes either in April. And I'm, I'm hesitating because I'm hoping it's not in May because that is holding up our, our five-year forecast. We, we haven't even started because we have not gotten the, the information from Montgomery County. So, I just sent, um, a young woman at, at Montgomery County, an, an, an email just a few minutes ago, asking them when are they going to, um, post our property taxes for the second half. And so, that is holding us up, and I, I won't be able to start with, um, completing the five-year forecast until I get that information. Um, state foundation, um, is trending right exactly where we anticipated. Uh, March is nine months out of twelve, which is seventy-five percent, so I'm really pleased with that, that we, um, hit that right on, on, on target. Homestead and rollback, we've hit right on target because we get that, um, twice a year, so we have fifty percent. Um, other revenue, we are a little, um, low on that, sixty-eight percent. But overall, the revenue is, um, trending pretty well. It's like seven percent lower than we anticipated. But that, uh, we take into account the fifty percents, and so we should be able to hit our targets for revenue. This is expenditures. So, salary, I'm always holding my breath when we run the numbers for salary. We have, um, projected that right on, on target. Uh, retirement, salaries and retirement, um, or benefits, I should have put benefits. Um, that is right on target. Target purchase services, at this point, we are trending ninety-five percent, um, higher. And I have a note about, uh, the purchase services. Uh, well, purchase services includes our vendor contracts, professional development, travel and tuition from other districts. So, we are, um, ahead, way ahead of what we have anticipated. When I do the May five-year forecast, that's going to increase because we're at ninety-five percent of what we had anticipated through March. So, we'll, I'll have three more months, and so that, that causes me concern just on that line. Supplies and materials also are over, um, what we anticipated, but we know, um, exactly why. We spent, um, a half mil, four hundred thousand dollars on these whiteboards. So, we were able to buy, um, I can't remember Marla, how many we bought, or Eric, I should say. How many whiteboards did we buy?
Roughly a hundred.
A hundred and fifty whiteboards. So, we, um, um, used general fund money, uh, for that, and so we know exactly why that, that is trending a hundred and three percent above. So, I know exactly, uh, why. So I know exactly, uh, why. Capital, uh, outlay is, is, is right where we, um, forecasted it, and we don't anticipate anything, um, going over that. So we're good at that, and then everything else is, um, trending, um, trending like it should be. So the overall for expenditures is right, total is right where we, um, we are anticipating. But when we, when we're looking at April, May and June, that will be telling when we do our May five, um, five-year forecast. So fund, um, two, bond retirement, I talked about that a little earlier. Um, we, in two thousand two, the citizens of Troy would approve a thirty-five million dollar bond, um, levy to build five schools. And so we have been paying the debt and principal, the principal and interest, I'm sorry, um, since, obviously since I got here, was before I got here. We have twelve more payments, two per year, and that, that debt will be paid off in December of twenty thirty. Um, every November, the county auditor office calls me to ask me if we have enough money to pay the principal and interest. And when he first called, this was many, many years ago, I'm like, God, I have that power to actually say whether we increase that because the, um, the, the citizens voted for this village? So we have to make sure that this bond collects enough money to pay the principal and interest. And so luckily, knock on wood, last year, we were able to reduce it to eight point seven mils. And so we're hoping we can keep that mileage there and we won't, we won't have to increase it. And like I said, there's twelve more payments, and there's basically six more years, I guess?
Yeah.
Five, five more years, um, to pay, to pay this debt. And so I'm sure the citizens will be, um, happy about that. Um, another fund, permanent improvement is fund, um, oh, oh, three. What oh, oh, three was, the citizens again approved, um, a ten million dollar levy, and it's called locally funded initiatives. And what that is, the auditorium that we have, all of the auditoriums and the football field were not under the, um, state provided program to build the schools, we had to pass an additional levy in order to, um, fund those. And so, um, we are, are, um, getting money for that. We refinanced this in twenty fifteen, so we had to go to Chicago, refinance the debt, and we saved the dis, we saved the citizens, I should say, almost a half million dollar, dollars. This debt also will be paid off in December of twenty thirty-four, uh, and we have twenty more principal and interest payments. And so each year, the district has to transfer three hundred thousand dollars into this fund, um, in order to continue paying for, half of this fund pays for our technology as well. And so you'll see, um, in, on June, I think it was twenty-six, twenty-seven, when we have our financial meeting at the end of the year, we will move three hundred thousand dollars from general fund to, um, this fund, oh, oh, three. And we do that every year, we've been doing that, um, to keep that fund flush. Oh, oh, six is our food service fund. Um, obviously, this fund is, is related to all, everything food service, um, relate, related to, to, um, feed our kids. Uh, last year, the, um, general fund had to supplement this fund by a half million dollars. And I looked at Marches, and it's still five hundred thousand dollars. It looks like we might have to do the same thing, um, at the end of this year. So, uh, keep in mind, that's eight hundred thousand dollars that we have to move from general fund to, um, make sure that's fund six and fund three are, um, in the black at the end of the year. This is not, um, a typical, this is typical of, um, school districts across the state. They're having to do the same thing with their food service funds because we don't get enough federal funds, um, to, 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 um, finance our food service. So we have to use some of our general fund monies to, um, to, to keep that fund in the black.
And for practicality standpoint, let's say five hundred thousand versus five million, or four million? Because we do get reimbursements for meals, but that would be the district portion that's paid. There, you get that?
So, um, there are other funds, as I've talked about, um, that we, we use to classify both revenue and expenses. And all of these funds that I talk about, um, I bring to the, uh, board meeting, and you guys, uh, approve these every month, every other month, every three months. Um, and I, I actually gave you an example, and you can't hardly see it, and I can't really see it either. I'll have to walk up closer to it. When I bring this to you guys, this, obviously, um, this is the appropriation for all our funds and this fifty-eight million dollars, um, total. So you have general fund, you got a bond retirement, you have permanent improvement, and then you have all of these other funds here. And so one of the distinctions between anything that starts with a four in our state and the rest of the five, anything that starts with a five is federal. Then you have your food service, and then these seven, eight are scholarship funds. Oh, twenty-two, as I talked about, is our tournament fund. And that was just the first page of that. So I just thought it would be, um, helpful, particularly for our new board members, to know when, when I bring that to you, I'm asking for the appropriation. And after I do that, I have to send that appropriation to Montgomery County, and then Montgomery County gives, gives us a certificate to say, yes, the appropriation matches your, what, what you expect for your, it's called certificate of, certificate of estimated resources. And they give us a, um, a document to say, yes, you're, you're in compliance. And so we do that all the time.
Where did you say five, what did you mean?
Five is, um, federal. So for instance, five seventy-two is title one, five sixteen is, um, special education. So that's the document that I bring to the board, uh, for you guys to approve. Okay, so I just kind of listed, um, our state and federal, our primary state and federal, um, grants. And, um, this is where I'd like Jill to kind of, um, pipe in, but these are the major grants, like I said, title one, um, improvement basic programs. We have IDA B, special education, we have our early childhood education, and then there's two newer grants. Well, the newest one I know, um, is strategy secondary transition student with disability. So you might want to talk about what that is, Jill, because I, I don't know exactly.
Uh, I think the first thing I would say is I also got to the, um, the state grants conference earlier. And Ohio has already been awarding money for next year to all of these grants, so we're not concerned about losing funding as federal changes next year, but the year after, I think. So the strategy secondary transition is a grant that should, um, choose this department for, um, that's going to help students with disability that's going to help students move from the secondary level transitioning to, um, our, our traditional operations.
Okay.
Um, and so, we're purchasing about a program for that. And it's only about four hundred dollars, we spend all of that this year.
So, all of the, so, the, the majority of the federal grants are under CCIP and it's called comprehensive CC content, I'm sorry, continuing, comprehensive improvement program.
Right.
CCIP. Um, we have about four point two million dollars underneath that. And, um, all of these are, um, the, the, um, were, were goals that, um, are in the CCIP. So, Jill does a lot of going back and forth and I think with Rachel's help, um, to indicate what those grants are going to be used for. And at the end, all of the things that we say that we need to use the grants for in terms of employment and programs, we have to stick to that particular, what they say unless, um, we will have to pay money back. And we, we never, we've never had to do that, uh, because we, um, you know, we've done a really, really good job in terms of, um, looking at our grants and making sure that we're aligning our program and the staff to the particular grants. And so, you can see those are the four or five different things, um, goals that we have under our CCIP consolidated grant application. So, other grants, and I just thought this was very interesting. I just put this student wellness grant up here and Tracy and I always, um, Tracy is the keeper of the student wellness, so to speak. Uh, this past year, we had eight, eight hundred twenty-six thousand dollars allotted. This year, we have six hundred seventy-nine thousand. Uh, we, um, have to, have to submit a report, I think it's in May, of what we spent on student wellness. And we have to spend that eight twenty-six. And we're going to spend exactly that to the penny, eight twenty-six, three oh eight, because we do not want to give any money back to the state. And so, like I said, Tracy's the keeper of student wellness. Tracy, did you want to say anything about that? She does a good job of keeping it known. Well, you're doing excellent job because it's funny, when I go to Tracy and I'm like, oh, Tracy, no, no, no. She said, Janice, I got it, I got it. So, and she does have it, she and Clarissa Bird do a really, really good job of keeping track.
A lot of the, oh, yeah, I was going to say the things that are reported from there are, um, our mental health therapists.
Thank you.
On, from Samaritan, that, um, it's a big chunk of that.
Okay.
We have seven mental health therapists throughout the district. So, there's one at, to the other mental schools, two at the mental school and two at the high school. Um, and then it also pays for a lot of the other services that we give for, um, alternative learning services. So, left street, um, where we send students and places like that. We still have to pay.
Right.
For their tuition and things like that. Um, and then there, each of the buildings have been allotted some student wellness dollars away. Some of them have spent it on flexible seating, um, some of them have spent it on social emotional sensory tools.
Right.
And they've, they've had, um, each of the buildings have, um, a wellness room that they created and used the funds, by providing the funds to be used for that.
So, I also listed some smaller grants, um, that we've received this year and, um...
I, I would say the Ohio Arts Council grant, the Martin Luther Jennings Center grant are all things that, um, teachers or principals apply for on program. And so, that's, that's wonderful when they do that and then through this quarter, Tracy wants to get the act of setup and the money spent. Um, but I can get to it that that serves an example because sometimes there's this idea that, well, if our funding gets cut or other grants will label the other people out of place programming. And these amounts are kind of representative of what you might find in other grants. So, I, I think it's, we really, when there are those federal or state like, uh, grants, those are big ones. Those are the ones we want to focus on. For these smaller ones, while they're great for, for specific conditioners for one year, there really isn't a lot of money out there to replace funding that we need to use. And so, just thinking like, oh, we can write a grant for that.
Yeah.
It, it can help short term and with small projects, but it isn't a long-term solution for a company like this.
And these grants are very specific. You have to be specific to whatever that grant is, that's what you have to do. You can't just do whatever else. You have to do specifically what's designated in that grant. So, we thought this, this slide was, um, very indicative, like Jill said, of, of the smaller grants. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about the May five-year forecast. And the reason I wanted to do that is the next slide, we're going to talk about the legislators or legislation of what's happening in that fair school funding plan. So, this is what I'm hoping to, uh, to, to do during the Muppet April, which we're in now. We will work with our K-12s, Salt and Chris Moore, Marlon and I and Jill. The three of us will sit down and we will review every single line in this, um, five-year forecast. And so, that'll go from revenue all the way to expenses. We'll look at, um, uh, where, where our deficit spending li, lies, what we anticipate our cash balance, every single thing that, uh, that goes into this. All of the budgets, staffing, everything, every single thing financially affects this five-year. And we'll be, um, deep diving on that. Um, like I said, school and department budgets, we'll start to work on those. Those all impact this. So, every, every budget that we, um, implement will go into this five-year forecast and we'll make sure that those budgets align in terms of five-year forecast. Uh, we said we'll, um, have meetings with principals and department heads. And then I'm hoping that on May fifteenth, that we'll bring that, uh, five-year forecast to the board for approval. That five-year forecast has to be filed by May thirty-first. And so, that's why I always bring it to the business, I, I try to bring it to the work session. I think it's May first, I think? I, I would try to bring it to the May first, um, work session. Hopefully, we can have it, um, by then, but we're, we're really running out of time. But on, by the fifteenth, definitely, um, I may have to present it and, um, ask for approval, which I don't like to do because it doesn't give you guys a lot of time to look at it. But keep in mind, we can, um, submit it and if things need to be tweaked, we can submit it again. So, we can keep submitting, submitting, submitting. Uh, most districts don't do that. They might, they might resubmit it another time. But generally, we, we submit it once and then kind of every year, like we do in the finance committee, we look at how we're going against it.
So, are you still working on the financial account?
Yes, yes ma'am, yeah. So, I want to talk about this and, um, there were so many things that, that were coming at us, um, at, at this conference. And so, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. So, the auditor state has implemented this new, it's called financial health indicators. And what this is, is that they're going to look at each of the, our, what our fund ba, balance looks like, what our net access looks like, what the spending trends and what, and whether we're complying with the audit. What they're going to do then is they have this system, I think it's green, yellow and red. And if you have, I wrote it down, if you have, I think, two reds or something, then basically, you're on what? I mean, they're going to, um, write, write the treasurer and the superintendent and the board president a letter to say, you're out of line in these three areas. Please, um, talk to me or send something back on how you, you plan to fix that. Is that basically how you heard it, Jill? So, this is something brand new, it's effective July first. And I have to smile because all of this stuff, and I, I'm going to be around, um, along the periphery, helping Jill navigate all of this because all of this is brand new, all of. So, I'm not going to leave Jill out there by herself, but this is brand new. Um, the second thing, just an FYI, um, the, the Ohio House, they don't like this fair school funding plan. And so, basically, I think Erin last night, and I didn't hear anything last night, they, they...
They voted.
They voted on the, um, not fully funding the fair school funding plan. And so, the, I think I did this maybe on Monday, I think. Um, at this point, they were going to underfund Ohio schools by two point seven five billion dollars. So, you can imagine, you know, billion, I know we're talking about six hundred and so, um, school district, but two point seven five billion dollars, that's very, very scary to me because it's going to affect every school district. This third one is crazy. So, I didn't have a chance to do this, but, um, yesterday or the day before, they, um, increased that twenty-five percent to thirty percent. So, what that means is that, and I, and I did a calculation and I'll, I'll just go through the calculation real quick. So, what they're saying is they don't like, um, districts having any cash balances over thirty percent of the preceding expenditures. And so, what I did is I did, I just looked at thirty percent of FY twenty-four expenses. Um, that comes to eleven point six million dollars. If we had twenty-two million dollars in the bank, so to speak, we would be over by ten point four million dollars. That means they would take away ten point four million dollars from us. And, you know, I mean, th, this was the hottest topic around there. So, if you think about it, when we go out to look at our bond ratings and Erin, you, you know all about this and Erin can speak probably much better than I, when we go out and look at, um, trying to buy bonds, they look at our credit rating. If you don't have so much money in the bank, then your credit rating is going to be affected. And so, I don't know why they're doing this, but that, that was voted on last night, the thirty percent, right?
Yeah.
So...
So, it passed this initiative.
Okay. So, we'll be looking at that and, um, there, uh, there were some suggestions, um, on that. So, uh, we'll just, we'll just keep you updated on that. Um, and then the last one is that if we do have that thirty percent, if our carryover balance exceeds thirty percent, they want the county commission to reduce the property tax rate. So, therefore, they want to, to pull back our property taxes. Uh, it's just, it...
It's re, it's just redirecting federal, federal and, and, and tax money into voucher programs.
Well, and that's basically...
What they're saying, they're going to move the money, is then to the state savings?
Quite exactly, yeah. I looked at, um, they, they have a, a report that I do, a similar report, it's called On The Money. They, their estimate, they're way ahead of what they estimate. So, there is money to fund these schools, but like you just said, I think that the whole thing is to funnel a lot of the money to the, um, proper, real and private schools. So, um, we, we have our task cut, uh, ahead of us, but we're, 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 we'll figure it out. Hold you. And so, my last words of this budget bill, substitute budget bill, will have a great impact on the five-year forecast. Uh, we must plan, we must put a plan in place to address the deficit of spending and the district has to recognize that its financial status, recognize the financial status and make decisions accordingly. And so, that's just the last, uh, the last words from me. Um, so, we'll be looking at that, like I said, in the next couple of weeks and really doing a deep dive on, um, preparing our May five-year forecast. And that is all my... Are there any questions on that? So, I hope, I, I, I know we gave a lot of information, but that just gave a, a high-level picture of the other funds. I just didn't want anyone thinking we're only dealing with just general funds because we're not. Um, there's a lot of other funds that we're dealing with. And at the end of, the, end, end of fiscal year, all of those funds total have to be in balance. They can't be negative. So, we got to make sure that, um, we move around within the fund so that, that fund won't become negative. Are there any questions for Janice and Jill? And you?
It's uncertain, a lot of uncertainty. I said, it's a lot of uncertainty.
Oh, it is, it definitely is, it really is. It really is.
I don't, I don't have anything I think I spoke about, but excited about, uh, you guys kind of green-lighting our move to refining that strategic plan. And we're going to start implementing the PLC process. We've already taken some, uh, some steps toward it, but, uh, we're looking really forward, towards the, uh, the summer. And, uh, this is for early spring and summer as we start heading into the next year, next week.
Well, I will say this has been a very amazing and informative retreat. I'm going to speak for myself and what everyone else is going to do. I really appreciate this information and the things that you do. From the outside looking in, thinking it's easy to take, but, but it's full of that. So, I appreciate all the work you do and bringing that information, just to overview of information from each department. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Lunkin, I did go out of, this is not official, but I did go out of turn, so, Mr. Lunkin?
Oh, we all, uh, wrote letters to Congressman Turner and Senator Moreno about what you just talked about. Like, uh, the cuts on, um, on public education and redirecting of public funds into charter and, and, and private schools. So, each board member, our board education, board members from all over Ohio, uh, were urged to write letters to their, um, to their congresspeople and their people in the senate. And we did do that last week. And I think it's important for people to understand, like, we got to keep pressure on our elected officials, on our other elected officials about what they're trying to do to public schools. Um, we were at NSB last weekend and I, I found myself in some of the sessions that I went to. Um, we went, I went to one about combating vouchers. We went to one about, uh, language about diversity, equity and inclusion. And, um, really, it was a brainstorming session about how to combat those things. So, it's like, in Ohio, where vouchers are on the move and they're running because our governor has decided to dance with, uh, the move there that he wants to make. Vouchers are, any, any time, any time that there's public funds that are directed into private schools, it's a voucher. And, you know, proponents and people who love vouchers don't like to talk about it as a voucher because of the catchphrase. But if you take public money and you put it into a state savings account, that then the richest of us can go and, and get tax write-offs, that's a voucher. And when we're writing checks, um, to students for us to be able to pay for transportation out of our district into another one, it's a voucher. So, it's important for our public to understand, like, as, as funding changes and as the current administration and whoever the new governor in Ohio is going to be, it's important for us to understand what's going on. But we want you guys to know that we are keeping pressure on our locally elected congressmen and, and senator to make those changes. Now, we also know what side of the fence they stand on and I'd encourage everybody to go to their voting records. Don't believe in misinformation that people give you. You can know exactly how these people vote on, on what they want to do in a public school. That's it.
Mr. Turner?
Um, let me first apologize for being tardy this morning. My wires got crossed, I don't know how, but they did. And, and, um, I'm glad I made it in time. Um, because as the two board members who I've already spoken said, I think this has been a dynamic, um, retreat with a lot of information, a lot of good information, a lot of planning, a lot of projecting ahead. Um, and I want to thank Mr. Howard for sending us that link so that we could, um, send those letters to our, um, congressional congresspeople. And hopefully, it will resonate somewhere that public schools really need those finances. And for me, that's going to be big, to just try to figure out how we can fight what they're trying to do. Um, there's power in our voices, there's power in our vote. And I just think we need to get out to our constituents, to people in our community, our stakeholders, that it is important, this next election for governor is very important. Um, because it's, it's very scary about the future of, of public schools. I'm a product of a public school, um, and we just really need to be, it, it has to be on our radar. And that's all I have.
I was just too, I think they said everything I wanted to say. This session was enlight, enlightening, um, each of you, um, do a remarkable job. I think behind the things, I think we don't give, um, all of you enough credit. Uh, Mr. Manley, you said something that resonated with me. When you evaluate correctly your approach using the growth model. And I think that's how we have to go with that. Before, we weren't using evaluations as a growth model. But use it as a positive versus a negative. Uh, Mr. Howard, outstanding job on just presenting the strategic plan in the way that you did. So strategic and deliberate. I like mean sink, I like points. Um, I think that will resonate with our stakeholders and the rest of, uh, our parents and all of our, everyone. Um, thank you all. You do a great job, uh, every day. I think Ms. Murdock, she said, if we start early, um, and catch those deficiencies early and find out where we're going with that, I think we'll be on to something. As always, Janice, you do a good job at presenting transparency. Um, we know where the money is. If there are any questions that we have, we don't know, we can ask you. So, thank each of you for what you do every day. And Mr. Howard, this was phenomenal this morning and I appreciate all your hard work. I know you guys have worked really hard behind those things on all of this information. So, every time we take a vote, we get information so we can make informed votes like we did this morning. So, looking forward to our district moving forward. Thank you all.
Um, same here, it was very, very, a lot of, a lot of questions from the first, uh, retreat. And I appreciate all the presentation. Um, there's a lot to learn. And it's nice to see, uh, the positive direction that you're moving into. So, I'm looking forward to, uh, the next year. Janice, thank you for the presentation. Finance is always a big thing. And just excited to be here and to be able to talk to you.
Do you all have anything to say, anything additional?
Go enjoy your rest of your Saturday.
Yeah, thanks. Do you have anything else?
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Simmons? Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mr. Lunkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Can you put this in a PowerPoint?
That? I mean, probably not.
Can you give me the bullets?
Yeah. If you pull up that website, all things PLC.